Yeah, it's about seven o'clock with all the October six meetings on order. And need to roll call.
Senator Mano, Nicole Bailey.
Okay, we have two F, we have forums, we see them. We got public comments.
Officer one, Mr. Dieter.
I'm in.
With your permission, dear honor, I would like to bring to economic development a few things to the attention of the council. You notice the camera here. The camera has to do with Ray McCoffin and myself with San Jacinto County. I almost said Bullitt Ford. San Jacinto County Television. We have an online television station. And it goes beyond that. And all of the interesting things that are happening in our community are being televised on San Jacinto County Television, including the Commissioners' Court meetings, DSD meetings, and we even go in the Shepherd and record their meetings. And we have business cards that we'd like to pass up. I can give them and put them on the table or have them out there. And the other thing, Ray, would you like to add to this?
I think you pretty much said it all.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna contribute this way.
And the other thing that we'd like to bring to your attention is really, really exciting. You know that the Masons are unfortunately in leave in our community. And there's a vacancy there that has been filled. And that vacancy is by the Corral, who has been in Willis. And they are going to be opening up as soon as humanly possible. And you see the menu that I have here? This does not tell the story until you get into the menu and the selections. And besides that, we are going to have entertainment on a regular basis there. And the owner is Danny, and he could be even more excited about coming to Cold Spring. So we're going to do everything we possibly can to make him welcome. And also going to tell folks, it's one time, and you'll be glad.
All right, and we also have Paradise Real and Soul too.
Some texts.
So you've got new two that he was here.
Mayor, we have one other person that put yes on there, but he said his questions are over in the bond is discussed.
It's all right, the school bond.
Yes.
So we're through with public comment?
Yes, sir.
What I want to do on adopt of the agenda is we have put a breaking on the school bond, but if falls over, I won't move it up right now. So when we adopt the agenda, I won't put it on top of reports. Okay? So I'll do that here in a minute. Move that breaking up right away. Mr. Yankee, you can superintend, whoever should brief us on that. Can take care of that, and if they don't stay at camp, they're gonna leave after they take any questions. They might do that also. So, Ray, did you adopt the agenda of that change?
I made my change to that.
Say, with that change?
With that change.
They're moving the breaking on the school bond first.
Yes.
On the reports. All in favor?
Aye.
And who was my second here? You guys up?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's see. We're gonna approve of the minutes for September the eighth, 2025. We have a chance to look at it.
May I ask you a question, please, sir?
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right, we got the bills to be paid.
May I ask you a question, please, sir? Could I ask you else? A second.
All in favor? Okay, one other comment I need to make. You know that the electrical routes that were gonna come through and the twenty-six Cold Springs and KRL through this area. They were given us the opportunity to testify two weeks ago over the phone, and they decided not to do that. And Coalition from the Cold Spring area went ahead and went up there and testified. And the outcome of that meeting was released on October the second. And basically, the route that we're talking about, um, through the Cold Spring area and the community, South Side of Lake has been canceled. We're not gonna do that. So if you get a chance to, you know, I'll put something on the floor about that, to let the Cold Springs group that funded the attorney get a chance to shake a man. We appreciate it. All the community area people that participated along with the council. It was a long battle, but that took around, according to that mission, no longer exists. Yeah, they're gonna go more to the rest and up to the north. So we lose that. Now, not a big business. We're just waiting to see, okay? But right now, that's good news. We'll see how it works. We'll keep an eye on that. All right, I'm gonna jump all the way over to new business morning after breathing on the bond. And I'll turn the call over to you guys. You can come up here and talk to me. You all stand in the side of chairs. Welcome.
I understand that, Doc. I understand. Before I get started, I just wanted to thank everybody for Sunday and the members who were willing to actually come and speak this evening about the bond. And our focus has been the bond project. Right now, we're actually trying to go out in the community and be able to share information about the bond. That way, all of our stakeholders are full, regardless of how they may feel about the bond. We just wanna make sure they're informed of it and they go to the polls on the board. So I'll just go over a couple of things, just really as far as the bond. It really gives some background information of how the bond, what it is right now today. So Tuesday, November fourth, this is when five cultural workers, C I S D voters will consider a forty-five dollar bond proposal, focused on improving our environment and enhancing safety and addressing the supply facility needs. This proposal is a result of two years of research, planning, and community input led by the Facilities and Finance Assessment Committee for children's students. Key bond components, firstly, are campus reconfiguration, basically the campus, the Jones Campus rebuild, that would be the new Cold Spring intermediate where students will be housed and see integrated through through six. The current Cold Spring intermediate will then become the new J Q elementary, housing students integrated through eight and seven. Also includes four additional classrooms. And then the junior high campus will then be student, well, housing students integrated seventh and eighth, the sixth graders, as I mentioned, will be in the campus. So the district block facility improvements include upgraded exterior lighting, bright light, front fencing, and security intrigues that both the intermediate and junior high campuses do play around with it. Innovations to the junior high main building, new classroom furniture, additional R I door replacements. And so installation of eyes, updated campus signage, and interior painting. Also restroom upgrades, ceiling and floor tile replacements as well, and also new theatrical curtains across the district. Athletics and co-curricular enhancements, cultural workers high school, new competition gym floor, new wood floor, inviting, paint, and branding, but also detailed study of bleachers. That also includes the auxiliary gym at the high school campus as well, with new sport court floor, lighting bleachers, and dressing room upgrades. Junior high campus, new sports court floor, lighting bleachers, and laundry room upgrades updates as well. Also our outdoor facilities, new two tennis courts right there next to the administration building, bleachers for baseball and softball. Also the east side walls, storage and dressing rooms for baseball and softball scene athletes. Also includes six new school buses. And then just really wanted to add in tax information for over sixty-five homeowners. As long as it has over sixty-five home set exemptions on file, the amount of school taxes paid should not increase unless significant improvements are made to the home. And then also, it's important that the school taxes are frozen after the year the homeowner turns sixty-five. However, other taxing entities, county, hospital district, may not have the same tax level. If home values increase, overall property tax bill will be increased, but any additional taxes go to other entities, not the state or district. I just wanted to share that information in the depth of time if anybody had questions. Myself, I'm Michigan A D C here at our school board outside Michigan Co- who is the co-chair for that committee that's joining us this evening as well.
Where would you live in D A P?
D A P and maintenance and technology will then move to current street. So office on that side.
Now, one point that I would bring up is the fact that our schools are overcrowded already. Before we had eighteen neighborhoods coming in, we have high school, which is seventy-four, seventy-five percent full, which has capacity for growth. But the other three schools, one of them is ninety-seven percent, the other two are hundred percent full. Am I correct on that? Okay? So where do we move kids if we don't do the bond? Where do we put kids to come in?
And so we got to that point, Doc, or act to get model.
Modular buildings. I personally don't make that, do modular buildings. So maybe you can tell I'm doing the bond. Tennis sports that was brought up, and it's, some people don't really want anything athletic and so on and so forth, but knowing the tennis team like I do, because I have two children that are gonna be on the team this year, knowing that's been on for the last three years, junior high, June Varstein, and Varstein cannot practice at the same time because there's not enough room for his kids to practice. That's unfair. That's unfair and not right. And on top of that, we can't, there's any competitions around here because we don't have enough courts to be able to do that. If we added the additional two courts, we would be able to hold competitions here, which now means your kids aren't traveling on buses all the way to Madisonville and Trinity and all kinds of other places like that. It just shouldn't have to happen like that all the time anyway. But you can also house the kids to be able to learn where they're trying to be in. And I will say, Junior Varstein usually gets the back end of that whole deal because Varstein tries to. The monthly cost is another, the sticker value is forty-five million. That sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money. But when you break it down for the monthly cost of an average-sized family home with a home state exemption, can you explain what that would cost monthly and yearly? For the average-sized home, which is, what, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars here in Cold Spring?
About two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
So what would be the monthly payment that your taxes would go up with the addition of the exemptions that we're fixing to get on top of what we already have for home state?
So when you look at the proposed exemptions that be associated with November election, this is independent of anything to do with the school. This is state coming out of legislature action. And what will be proposed and presumably will be adopted by the state to tax the voters, you'll have a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars will be the new home state exemption associated with, in home state. And then there's an additional sixty-thousand-dollar exemption that will be associated with over sixty-five home state exemptions. That puts an over sixty-five home state exemption of two-hundred thousand dollars for that. Looking at purely from, and I had it out, and let her hand out there, if you flip to that back page, illustrations of what the base values will be in that last proposed home state exemption that will come up in November. Your per year impact and your per month impact, so let's just say two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house is your average valuation for home state in the whole area. You're looking at a per month impact of about twelve dollars and eighty cents. So just shot there, two dollars a month.
Long journey for me to talk a little bit. I mean, that's it, so we're gonna say, not all many to a. But, I mean, we hold our kids to a certain standard. And I know I do, and I know a lot of parents across this, this community do. We hold them to a standard that is high. We need to make sure that the facilities we put them in are at the same grade and same level that we want our children to be at. You can't expect anything from them if you can't put them in a situation to succeed. We have bathrooms right now in a high school gym, and every other school across the board that leak or don't work, we have water faucets that don't work, and we can say, oh, my goodness, where's maintenance? Maintenance has been passing these schools for years, for absolute years. These schools are not brand new outside of the high school, which was ninety-nine, I believe is the year, right? They're not new. Now, they've been, they've been duct taped a lot. Maintenance runs out of capacity of being able to take care of this stuff because there is so much duct tape that they're having to take care of. It is about time that we stand up and do something and help these kids get into a decent facility. You want teachers to stay in offense? Nobody wants to stay. Bathrooms are leaking all over the place. The place looks old and outdated and just poor now. My wife was a teacher for quite a few years up here. My kids have come up through school here. Now, I didn't grow up here. I came from Charis and Buildit area, but I've gotten to see every school along the way, and most of y'all have. A lot of y'all, I'm not speaking for everybody, but a lot of y'all have been here for a lifetime. Y'all know what's out there. So my personal opinion, I'm in for this thing, even though it will not affect my kids more than at all. I'm in for the community and for the other kids that are coming up. That's what I.
Can I ask you something? I actually love understanding the need here. That's my question. But the interest of many of the, of the people in this community is academics. Where are we, are we improving? It's great to spend money on athle-, and I was an athlete all the way through college, so I, you know, I respect all of that. But I also know that in past, our test results have been poor. I'm not a guy that always grades on test results, but can you give us a possibility?
Well, you can ask anybody that's been here with me for the last five years. Academic is my, my focus. We've had substantial improvement across the district. We do have improvement, in particular, junior high campus. When I first arrived here in Cold Spring back in May of twenty-twenty-one, the elementary was rated fifty-three. On three. It moved in one year to seventy-nine. It went down when they had the accountability standards that came in as currently seventy-four. So from an accountability standpoint, the intermediate campus gives the elementary campuses rating. So if the, when I came in, the intermediate was rated fifty-three, which also gives the two F exemption. Our campus currently right now is rated, our elementary intermediate campus, intermediate elementary campus, is rated a seventy-four. So that's improved. When I arrived, my first year in the district, the high school campus was rated seven. It's currently a seventy-five. Last year was seventy-four. So we do a lot of gold seven. In particular, our junior high campus has struggled the most with teachers. Over the course of the last few years, haven't given that campus a lot of stability. So with my role, myself and Dr. Clammer are pretty much at the campus. Miss Holden is a, a teacher there. She seems to be on a regular basis. That's our high focus campus. So from a district standpoint, the office can be on the record. We have goals that we set. The goal is right now for the intermediate campus to move from a seventy-four to an eighty this year. The junior high campus currently at fifty-nine. Let's move that to a seventy-five this year. That's the goal we've set. And then we have the high school currently right now is seventy-five. We have a goal set for that campus to be a two intermediate. From a, from an academic standpoint, over the course of the last two years with the new accountability system, the intermediate campus has improved by fifteen points. The high school campus has improved by twenty points. So again, we are training. We'll continue to that training, with stability as for staff. My first year I came to the district, we had forty-nine new teachers. Forty-nine new teachers. The following year, we had forty-one. We moved to rate, uh, four A in Schultz only, and went down to twenty-five. This year, we had nineteen. Out of the nineteen, ten of those were, because we have a new athletic director. So of course, you know, all that. So we had, so really, we're, we're strong where we are stated. If we have such high turnover, we're these things in the district. But right now, that's been a big part of our success, being able to recruit and retain staff. But right now, from an academic standpoint, we're, we're, we'll continue to this thing. Yeah, I agree.
So I think there's a good answer, so if they would want that tracked over the years. But when you look at breaking that down into plain English?
Sure.
Okay? How are our students better? And how will they be better over the next couple of years because of the problems that you've been seeing?
Well, a couple of things. It's much better, we've worked in the bond curriculum across campuses. We implemented a new curriculum over the course of the last few years that is really considered high-quality instructional materials that's been really aligned, I'll say. So we have a full curriculum that we've been on a better way in. Let's say, for example, at the roots, you may have, let's say, on average, three or four first-grade teachers. They're all vertically aligned, let's say, if students change classes, they still have that same high-quality instructional material from our first arrival that we're just using to, that was that. That's right. So that's a big part of it as well. But then at the same time, it is making sure we can recruit and retain high-quality staff. That's the number one factor that impacts student achievement is gonna be, can we, can we retain staff? Are we, are we doing a better job of retaining staff? Absolutely. We're talking about going from forty-nine in twenty-twenty-one to straighten off to just nineteen. We've pretty much cut that in half. That's not even including the, the component of having a new A D. So we're stronger there as far as being able to recruit and retain teachers. So we're gonna go around like Rickling, but at the same time, the folks, academic folks, you ask any staff members that are here, they know exactly where our data is. Our parents know where our data is. The data before it came out from the state, I sent it out to our whole entire school community before it actually was released by the state. Our staff doesn't know where that is. Well, because from a, from a leadership standpoint, I need to be able to pick one exactly where we are. But we also know this is where our data is, and I sent this out today. Our area of focus right now is math. Math is the area that we're trying to recover and rebound from to, from code. And of course, you can ask staff members that are here, and I went out today, all staff analyzed, all our data from our district on academics come from office. So every single piece of data, everybody could quickly with their phone right now may have pulled exactly where they were from last year and the goals we have set for this. So I'm able to provide that from a secret to the standpoint, that core focus on academics.
Thank you.
I have a question. If you prepared, I said, you exist in James Street Elementary, not over six students. Got a question again.
So basically, right now, you, the, the goal for the committee was not to have actual students there. We will have D A P students there. We also will have a few offices that will be here there as well. You'll have technology, you'll have maintenance, and you'll have D A P. But then also, we'll be out, we'll, professional development. So if we have a professional development day, that's where that site, that site will be able to have teachers for professional development. Or, let's say, for example, Eversol, and we have district lawn lunches, those are currently being housed over at Jones. That will then be the site for it. So that, that campus won't, won't be vacant. But we also kind of talked about those renovations down there as well, some incremental renovations down that campus. But at the campus, we will have strictly the D A P. The committee wanted to get all of your elementary students off the campus. At one point, it was to be discussed of using maybe a corridor, but we have some classes on the lower portion that's closer to the cafeteria. But the committee, the recommendation was to no longer have students housed at James Street.
Would you define D A P for the non-educative?
Yeah.
Define D A P for the non-educative?
Okay, D A P is your disciplinary or alternative educational placement. So that's stated then has committed a behavioral offense that warrants a facility to move from the respective campus.
That's smart, not to put the children, another, whoever chose not to put it in, not the other students stairs, but now it has some light.
I do have one more thing. So right now, with the elementary and intermediate, they share the same cafeteria. Can you explain that to us for those that don't know?
So, um, right now, for the last several years, the elementary and intermediate campus, they both share the cafeteria. So we have a much schedule for elementary students to start, well, it's a way of public engagement around ten, ten thirty. And it's, it's really a sight to see because you have, you have students that are coming in from both campuses. So it's a really quick turnaround process to clean all tables, get students out, next group comes in. And roughly, probably roughly about close to maybe eight hundred students between both campuses that that cafeteria staff serves. But it is really a very systematic process because you have students that are coming from both campuses for that money, starting at roughly about ten, ten thirty. Ten thirty-ish, twelve thirty.
Essentially, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. You know what time is at lunch in?
All in favor?
Twelve, twelve-thirty. I want to make it towards about twelve-thirty, actually, maybe?
Yeah, so the clock is right there around one o'clock each day.
That's one of my. Well, I don't like it, it's a, a.
So you have the both campuses to cycle through that one cafeteria.
So what kind of numbers at the end of the day are you gonna be able to handle for the growth? I may have missed it at the beginning of something.
You're improving, fixing, you know all this, but we know there's a lot of folks coming this way. Are they gonna be all of a sudden catching up with where we're behind? Or are we looking at a five-year growth?
Yes, so.
Should be coming to the table.
Right, so we're discussing, and we have discussed quite, quite intensively growth. The only campus that has room for growth right now is high school. It has about seven, about seventeen classrooms. The elementary campus currently right now pretty much is a classroom, maybe one, maybe classroom that we have available. Junior high doesn't have any classrooms that are available right now. And intermediate may have one or two. So with the growth piece, I think right now, if we're ready for launch, we can get a lead. The new campus that's gonna have students integrated, three through six over at Jones is really suited for six-hundred-and-twenty-six, somewhere in that, somewhere in that range. But at the same time, for example, that's the, that's the other piece. With junior high, you take a, a one grade or off, let's say, on average, is about a hundred-and-twenty-five students, and it gives you a little bit of flexibility there at that campus. And then we add in the additional four classrooms to be able to accommodate growth over at the backside of the, of the new James Street Elementary. So there's school and classroom that are part of that package.
So we're sitting around, still around twelve-hundred, thirteen-hundred?
Kids' service?
Yeah.
District one?
District one?
Yeah. Yeah, roughly about, the little number sixteen, sixteen hundred.
Right. Oh, sixteen hundred.
Yes, sir. Little number sixteen would be able to accommodate eighteen hundred? Yeah, I, I would definitely say so. I, I think the biggest thing right now as far as growth, and Michigan A D and I look at this, these numbers every single week. And there'll be some additional discussions that we'll have because right now, with the new developments here, you are gonna have growth. Right now, the growth that we've been taking on has been very incremental. It's really, you have a high mobility rate. So we have, let's say, four, how we have on one week, six students in, the next week, ten students out. With the new, new, new growth in development, yeah, that's gonna be a, based on one of those situations where, from a district standpoint, we're able to take on growth and reach campus. That's, that's, that's the goal. We have, at the new streets, we'll have four additional classrooms to be able to alleviate that. At the new site, we plan it for six-hundred-and-twenty-six students. And at the junior high campus, you'll be down to two grade level. So that gives you growth for growth in every single campus that we have across the district with, with this project.
Formally, other elements associated with that on the Jones campus, we are not delving some of the existing buildings, and there's a provision in the end. So I'll take one of the east wing, the former has moved for twenty-four, about, fifteen, fourteen. That will actually not be finished out for development, a classroom space at this point in time, but it'll be a suitable, that building envelope, because it has relatively new roof structure under that's been on in twenty-eighteen, I think. That will outspace room into that facility, ultimately, if we need to develop flat spaces or not ar spaces, whatever that might be. The other element that we feel quite frequently questions associated with the existing gyms that are on that location, the third gym, historical, to get against it, a lot of interest in that. There is no current proposal for us to address that, so we at this point in time, certainly not going to demolish it. The other element associated with that is that if we were to address it, we have some change, code upgrade is associated with ADA accessibility. So the approach to not to address that facility at this point in time is to potentially be available for community usage, but we're not upgrading that facility. But at the end of the side of the new construction area, on that campus, you actually have a new P E gym incorporated into the classroom, but also that forces availability for community usage as well, with extra access. usage as well, with its shooter access.
Um, I have one more question. Okay, so when they built the new school over there, we had to get out of there because of asbestos, over at Jones, is that not the case anymore?
So, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about the Jones campus, uh, South Hall, the yard over there, uh, is not the vacant section of that facility, and then you have, what? It's a whole, whole egg building, um, side, uh, location. That is largely dilapidated at this point in time, that is scheduled for demolition, not only because of the baby element, but then also because of structural engineers are allowed to address the facility, uh, for interior remodels, uh, associated with that. So that would then be scheduled for demolition. The north hall and the cafeteria were abated, uh, the north hall was abated in the late nineties after the, something, tornado, or storm.
Hurricane.
Hurricane.
Hurricane. Oh, that was a clean-up, yeah, that's, that didn't look bad, I'm serious.
You're back on the floor. Uh, and then, we worked on Hurricane Ike, the cafeteria area was abated, uh, that was largely a theme project, and then the tech wing area that was utilized, turned into a food room, that was abated, uh, the utilized areas were abated in eighteen, uh, sections that have not been abated, uh, so it's scheduled for demolition. So that we don't have a suggestion.
Any other questions? Super ten, had a finance?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move down to reports, Josh, you want to tell us about the way to go with the plant?
I have a two bills for the plant, forty-eight thousand gallons, that's twenty-four percent capacity, then max flow with seventy-one thousand gallons, and we got three inches of rain per month, and the only thing I have on here is just, uh, on satellite station. I do have on here, scheduled Wednesday or Thursday this week, but until Thursday. So we have it on the schedule for Thursday to replace all that discharge piping and all that we do, everything else, no issues.
That it? That's it? Any questions for Josh? Financial practice, which you have, I don't want to spend too much time on, uh, we're looking at, at seventy-five percent of the financial year for us, and we're already at ninety-five percent of revenue in, so we'll exceed what we forecasted, uh, for revenue and, uh, budget. As far as expenditures, uh, we're only at, uh, right at sixty percent of the, uh, of the line items that you have in expenses, so we're doing very well. So gains, ground on the revenue end, and of course, I'm sure, as we get to the end of the year, we'll go ahead and, uh, expedite some of this, uh, in November, uh, you'll have a product budget coming at you that you'd like to look at, uh, we'll report on it in December, and, uh, in December, we'll do any line out changes and make sure all lineups stay, uh, in, in the black. Any questions on the general fund? Uh, I take a long look at the sewer account, and we're doing a little bit better than what we did last year. We're fifty-one percent on the revenue side, and we've already expended eighty-one percent of all of our expenses. Uh, we'll probably exceed, uh, what we have, uh, in the coffers on the revenue side, and we do have, uh, contingency funds, like we do every year, to support the sewer fund. We're not in, we're not profit driven when it comes to services, uh, so we try to break even, so the general fund, as long as I've been around, always comes in and supports and props up, uh, the sewer treatment operation. One day, and we're working hard with new customers to get new product, uh, we may be there, uh, in the near future, I, I'm not in favor of going up on the, on the ways, we'll keep it just like it is, and, uh, with these new lines come in, we'll see how that plays out. Uh, and we'll talk about a couple of those here in a minute, and I'll get to the grants. Uh, I took a look at the hotel motel, and, uh, I pulled, or Joey pulled the nineteen ninety, uh, ordinance for me, and I read it, and it's a very good ordinance, but it has some old, uh, legal references, and I've asked counsel to take a look at that, and for sure, he'll come back and update, uh, the ordinance on hotel motels.
Next month.
Next month, and you'll have a chance to look at that by the end of the year, we'll probably adopt that, and at that point, we'll be, there's some people we need to talk about doing a better job on, on collecting the four percent that they're supposed to collect and send in again, uh, and at that point, we're going to talk about, uh, moving those funds over to, uh, the city tourism department, that we're fixing to go into, and, uh, try to, try to, basically, we'll send that ordinance, just telling us how those funds should be spent, and I don't think we're doing a too good-looking job right now on that, so we're going to sort of look at that, and I'll take the advice of counsel on that move when we move it, so I think I gave you a copy of the old ordinance that I signed back in nineteen ninety, here I go date myself, uh, and I was proud of them, but now, it needs to, legally, needs to look at it, and ensure it up before we try to enforce it, or we'll run into problems. Uh, as you can see, we've only got seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars in this year, and that's way off. I know that the coach bring in is way off on bookings, and some of our, uh, bed and breakfasts pays, uh, that tax, that four percent tax, they followed it, and then we have some new ones, and we've got to have a methodology on identifying those new ones and let them know about the ordinance, so they can participate also, it's not costing them anything, that four percent comes from that person out of town, and they contribute that four percent for our tourism department to get the word out about, about the city. That's why, so we'll work on that over the next two or three months, and we get that sure of, uh, let's see, capital projects, I'm going to talk about, uh, the city hall project with municipal board, I'll talk about public works, uh, when we get down to that on the grants. I'm going to jump over into the investment report, it's the same as it's been for the last six months, we haven't removed any money, uh, we've been actually just on what coming in franchise tax-wise and sales tax-wise, our sales tax is way up, uh, with the new business, and that's good, and now, uh, we've got, uh, two new contributors to food services in town, and I think there'll be a boost, a little bit of boost there. So you're looking at two million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents, uh, same as it's been most of this year, and we'll say that, we may start pulling some out of the tax bill account, which is a quarter of a million dollars, to use on some of the capital projects that we're funding ourselves, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. Uh, you've got a report on the community center, and, uh, we're up to five thousand, three hundred and five dollars, which is good, uh, we had, we had forecasted about five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, so we'll, we'll continue, uh, to look at that, and those are the willing goals. This is the first year we're operating a business, and once again, it's not a for-profit business, it's a service to the community, so, uh, I'll have to refill on the new bill here in a little bit. What we call, uh, the record contingent, we changed the name of that, because as we looked at the records and, and how long we have to hold certain records, the ones we have to hold forever or minute books, and, uh, I decided whether to put a fire protection system in the building now at the sewer plant, we would buy some vaults with a fire perimeter and keep those records here, those are forever records. Then you get into the grants, where we don't hold the master, uh, records on the grants, like the sponsor, the general land office, the parlor bag, a Hummer has given us a grant for, for, uh, text op on the sidewalk project, they hold all the records, we have a copy of them that we use in our audits, and we'll probably hold those for about three years in the, this morning, because the state agencies that monitor this have the official numbers. Uh, now, but I think by doing that, a lot of the stuff that we've been keeping here, and I've been going through the old class, saving those, a lot of those, depending on whether or not Amanda wants to travel out there, I might move those out to the building in the country finishing, and have an area of, of prints, and, uh, we'll discuss that. I guess the drive, of course, to get Amanda, whether she wants to keep here, or she'll go out there periodically, I'll let her make that decision. Uh, that's it on the financials and the general fund, which brings us down, uh, to the community center, I'm going to make comments on that in a minute when we get the upcoming grants, uh, so that moves us over to the volunteer protocol and Michelle.
George today?
Good night.
So, the month of September, we ran thirteen calls, um, we had three wild man firefighters, two DAP fires, two MBAs, um, two, we did landing zones, and three district guard calls. We're continuing our in-house training like we've done, uh, we've all been on the previous meetings, uh, we had eight of our members complete there, emergency medical responder force, uh, at the end of the month, we've got our class B exempt training, emergency driver training, and a stop at late class for an attendant. On Saturday, we have seven members that are going to be testing for their firefighter certifications, county white training is higher behavior. As far as public relations, we attended the funeral for Trooper Jerry Adamek, um, and we hosted the firehouse table with Sonic Lodge. Station improvements, while we're waiting for the electricians to begin to work on the electrical work. With ESD, we went ahead and signed over the two thousand and eleven tainer, the title to them for that, um, and ESD has canceled our lawn service, so we're looking into purchasing on equipment, so we take care of that ourselves. We have two new members that have joined us this last month, uh, and we're also working with the school and starting the first responders of the future of the club within the next thirty days of the year.
So, um, that was one of my questions about the electrician, because I figured when I looked at that, and I know Triple B out there, he caused my fortune, but he has stepped up to the plate, he's really trying to help the community with his work, and it's going to be a big plus, I find, I would hate, when I look at it, and I saw service staff coming through the pine trees, branches on the potting below it, and then I saw a weather head, and then a lighter box open on the outside of the building, with no gutters catching rain, I said to myself, to you, to, how y'all open this, and you said with a stick. So, so I was, when I talked to Juan, I said, but we need, this needs to go to the inside of the building, and I was, I was very pleased when he came over and he offered the good he said, and I said, hey, you get to contact with the bosses over there, we all work out of time to do it, we, we've got to be careful not to disrupt EMS operations or the fire operations while we're doing this, so, that's in your hands, you can all handle it, you can be covered, and note, clear the light away, a line that comes, the old line that comes across the street, there's nothing to haul, and, uh, I'm like, he's got a new weather head, he's put in with the, with the lighter box, so we should not run a firehouse house.
We're just waiting to hear from him on scheduling?
Well, I want to thank y'all for the work that you do, and I'm sure Dad will continue to support you. I've got the agreement, uh, I've had y'all a copy of it, we'll use it for tomorrow, that I will carry to the ESD about, uh, EMS side of the house, municipal space, and, uh, I come ahead with the, um, the waters, sewer, electricity, and sewer name, and I put the fonctions in the city's name, and that way, under our agreement, they reimburse us with actual costs at the end of each one, and that's all. When I asked them to rent, once again, this is a service to the community, and it's the city's responsibility to keep the building, keep the building up, and, uh, in a minute, we'll talk about grants, uh, explain some of the funding I'm going after, the possibility to do that, okay? Appreciate y'all. Uh, capital projects, I've worked with Joey on this, and he put that up there, and for him to streamline, I'll probably pull it to you at me when we're going to be here very long tonight, don't be, you're a little bit long, but next minute, you're going to be here long, because there's a lot of things happening, I'll get into it later. The.
Hundred percent.
This, this gives you an idea of some of the grants that's being sponsored, though, uh, that we're working right now, uh, the part of it is, uh, what they call metnon, it's a six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar project, and that's a project going out here all the way to twenty twenty-five, is bringing to this area, uh, and I was hoping that we would stick to our schedule, and this, this Thursday, have that bid open, I got a call with the city engineer, and one of the bidders had a question about the pocket list, and so we have to answer that question, which means we have to cancel this bid open, re-advertize it, and in two weeks, have a bid open. So right now, our bid open, that line is scheduled on the twenty-third of, uh, October, at eleven o'clock, at the city hall, and instead of having a special call meeting next week, you know, since tonight, we'll just wait until November and make the warranty contract, so, uh, that there's no more complaints like that, okay? So we don't, I was going to schedule a special call meeting this week, we're not going to do that, there'll be, the regular meeting November, and we'll take a lot of issues at that, at that meeting, as far as grants and stuff like that. Uh, so we're moving on on that, on, on that, uh, I think today, when we discussed it with the engineer, there's like nineteen requests for clients, which names, we're going to have a really good turnout of people interested, and this is not a difficult line, majority of it's gravity and pump, so, uh, hopefully, we'll get a good, a good bid on this and get this going. Moving down to the next one, which is a parlor bag, the city, a half million dollar grant that went down hard, uh, we came in with two hundred thousand dollars left on the table after we finished the project, and I went to, uh, Parlor Bag, and I asked him, can I do a changer? And I said, oh, yeah, you can do it for forty thousand, I said, well, I'm not going to give y'all, one hundred and sixty thousand, I said, what are we doing that? He said, just rebid, rebid the two hundred thousand, so we're in the process of right specs, we believe we can get this bid in order till the end of the year, and it's a total gravity line, where we get on the opposite side of the hill, and bring all of those other modern incomes all the way down to where we're working, where we have a van, or just kind of rest of that money that we were renting. It took a lot of talk, just for the bag, that we can do that quick, but it's a shallow line, it's a gravity line, uh, a big hurdle to the Indian Nation, getting to say that there's no better grounds up there, uh, and it's the environmental people, that is what will cost us about ninety days, but I think January one, we can select a contractor, it's the same one we used, and there's no reason why he can't be as competitive as anyone else, because he did that. because he did that with two hundred thousand less than what we had in the block. And we've learned the lesson. When we do designs from now, I told engineering, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it about three phases. So instead of me asking for additional engineer, you want to do it to two hundred thousand, I'll just, I already have them in my original documents. And make sure we tie up all the money where we don't have to go through this. It's kind of a big shelf ready project per se according to the general land office. So those two, I spent a lot of time in Austin with they talking. I'm not in Austin, I'm in Brooklyn with they talking. We had the block wrapped, which is three hundred thousand. And I asked to do, once again, the studies, and having some shelf ready programs ready to go. This is a new general land office wanted to experiment with it. So we looked at the downtown area, we looked at the erosion of the roads, we've got that study in there, we looked at the floodplain. We're not mapped one hundred year floodplain. I asked to do that. They said we couldn't, we're still talking about that. And that would be a talk with Jody. One of the things we'll talk to them about tomorrow, you know, meeting. And then there's an underground drainage system on the Paradise River, under the bank over by the tollbooth exchange. I'll try to convince them that we're going to scow that with a camera and see what kind of shape that's in. That can be part of the water that receives best. We want it along with, in this is a project that will elevate the streets upon the sheriff's office a little bit to where I don't get so much of, I'm gonna call it infiltration on the face of that road, and that water backs up where we can get to move and not settle on top of that, and it's a runaway asphalt. There's also a proposal to re-top that part of the town and raise all those manholes and see what we got. All that water goes into what is called a retention pond in front of the shelter, a big ditch out in front, and then goes over to the other side. So we're gonna work with text op, study those, and make sure there's enough capacity with the culvers to move the water as quick as we can on over the fall break and all that. And that way, we really will play that part. We'll have to deal with that when we get out. Let's see, that was R C P. Spent quite a bit of time with text op. We have a three million dollar project that takes sidewalks from the high school all the way down to the interchange. They've already done the survey. That's done there. I just got to give. And this is a sweetheart project. Because text op, design it, build it, keep the funds, only have to sign off on it. They'll take the money, they do the whole thing. So it keeps Jody a little bit calmer. Actually, I didn't have a mess with that three million dollars in a day. We meet with them every year. We'll fix it, go back next month and meet with them on this project on the bypass that we're still talking about, how that ever lay. One of the things we've got in today is I have two projects or two grants. I'm gonna go ahead and talk about them since we're talking about sidewalks. And both sidewalk projects, one picks up the low water income housing down on one fifty east and running sidewalk on their side all the way to the courthouse. The other one goes out to the junior highway, one fifty six, and runs the sidewalk all the way into the exchange and corner bank. And they cross over and build on a sidewalk going to the courthouse. What happened to us is low water, somebody would ride bicycles and pointed out, there's a, there's a Bluebonnet bicycle trail, I think that's what you call it, that comes through Coles Spring. I said, well, I didn't know that. I know we have competitions here. And when we do it, they come to us, and we block all the corner, and they're usually through here an hour and gone. He says, no. He said, if you do a sidewalk project, you gotta do a bicycle. And I said, well, y'all were once funded, engineering, what's holding you up? He said, well, we gotta get you to do, redo your two applications. And I said, okay, well, the law office does that. And so we sat there. Jody will have us come to her within the next day or two. I'll sign them to the back end by Friday, and we'll be up for those two grants. One of them, one fifty east is one point two million dollar project, and one fifty six is a two point two million dollar project. I kind of feel like the way they're pushing them, we're gonna get one of them. It could possibly be both. Now, the bike lane, that's a ten foot, a five foot sidewalk, five foot bike lane. So however they figure it out, they're engineers. That's fine. I told them I want to keep it away from the shoulder on my highway. Get over on the edge, come this way. You'll have to do dirt work and stuff like that. And that's why these are a little bit older than I anticipated. It's their money. They spent the money that they have. And originally, I said, no, I wanna do a bike lane. I said, pray, this might, this might help us get these grants sent. I said, I, I've asked Jody, I've gone through my mind, and I can, I cannot, remember signing any kind of resolution on the Bluebonnet Trail where it calls spring. But I'll accept that. You guys tell me you got one, we'll take it.
We're actually on the Texas alternative vehicle plan.
Yeah, that's the T A, the tech.
That's what he talked about.
And they get so much valuable money, and that's what these are for. And that's what I'm trying to tap in on the bypass that I talked about, that we're too, we're too behind. All right, Parks and Wildlife, back here. We haven't had, before I can spend any Parks and Wildlife money, I gotta have aggression, the Texas licensing, yada, yada, yada. So you make contact today, I made contact in Rockville today. Within two weeks, I think one of us is gonna get the number. And once I get into Parks and Wildlife, we're gonna start on this project back here in White, in here. If it all happens, I thought we're gonna get started. Okay. I think if the guys have the market lanes, the paint, they will, and we'll look at the trees that are in the middle of the new walking trail, and get those taken out with the roof system. And then bid out the dirt work, and bid out the underground plumbing, electricity, or all the lamps that'll be there. And spend Parks and Wildlife money as best I can before I can spend mine. And then we'll probably, once again, pour some money in for a restroom, and make sure we have the security cameras in the entire park. And go from there. Now, the next section I added on here is the yellow section. Run that up a little bit. Basically, this talks about, I talked with Doc B, and I said, I don't want to get more aggressive this time. Let's go for the big bucks. So we located. Parks and Wildlife, they got two types of grants, a hundred thousand, three hundred thousand is a fifty fifty match. But I took the grant person out to the ballpark, and I talked to them about, by and of all, a section at a time, putting in new lights and underground and all that power through the new concession standing, where you had it all locked up instead of sitting out there. So we're gonna take the T-Ball first. And I met with the new chair of the association. And I go and meet with the board on the sixteenth at six P M. And I'll take them the new agreement that they'll need to sign. And we're gonna get more involved in that. And there's gonna be probably about six months of getting comfortable with each other, because I'm gonna want to change a lot of things. I don't want to pump a lot of money into that, but also want, that is a city park, and I want everybody to understand that. And we're gonna, we're gonna step up the plate. We've already spent three hundred fifty, three hundred sixty thousand on the concession, the restrooms, and they're top notch restrooms. I really liked the job that Team Dean did on that. And we're coming back. And my first meeting out there said, well, the bridgeway is out. I said, well, how big are you? You need to tell me, and we'll look at it. It was, it is budget or national budget. So we're gonna be working with them. I'm pretty sure I can get another grant from Parks and Wildlife that were interested in that, that were interested in Old Town, the sports roads and parking lots. So I'm gonna work with that and get it top notch, and we'll go from there. I have a governmental round, I'm not gonna name who it's coming from, until I get to Steel Seal, where everybody else should go after that. It's a two point five million dollar grant. I'll put it for after the first of year. And I've got it earmarked, Judy, don't you be talking.
I'm not gonna talk to you.
I'm sorry, I'm a little biased. I know I make too much information. Y'all are gonna go apply against me. But that one is for the community center, a two point five million dollar grant. It's a ten percent match, which is, which is nothing for the two, you know, as far as I'm concerned. The next two that I talked about are five million dollar grants. I put one of them in for the firehouse, which is probably taking two rotations to get it. But I want them to know that we're gonna do it. I'll get with Michelle and them on the original design that we'll start next year, and get some ideas. And then the other five million is a backup plan for the community center. I want to get the community center going. I got the design finished, fixing to go to engineering. I got both Iron Brothers out of Huntsville and Mewler, out of Willis, looking, it's a steel frame type building, and getting their engineers to look at that, seeing it work. A lot of times, you can design stuff, it's not feasible to do. Okay, I'll get your architects, I'll bend down that road. So we're gonna take, step back and take a look at it before we do all the engineering on the building. Hopefully, by next March, if all these grants come in, that's gonna be shelved. If it's a two point five million, it's plenty to do the project and the street. If it's five million, it's plenty to do a buyout of some neighborhood apartment and put in a parking lot on the backside of it. Now, I hate to say this, I should, I want to say it before the commissioner, he'll go tell it. Also, an outdoor restroom for the square area. And that all will work into the plan. So we'll see. And basically, when you add up all of what we're gonna put in for next year, including the sidewalks that I talked about, we're putting in for about sixteen million dollar little grants. If I can get a fraction of that, that gives us more projects. Because right now, I've got the park project, which is a grant sewer line here, which is a grant extension over the fall, which we'll bid out. We're doing an extension from the municipal court behind me, out of our pocket. We're doing our, what I call a public works building and workouts at the sewer plant on our property with our money. And we'll be talking about those of the projects more in your end hood, on how we're gonna do that. Any questions on those? Now, from now on, I'm gonna shorten what you get, and you'll get this sheet. And that's what takes you. Any questions? And I'm gonna move on and flip over here to our council. We brought in the draft, like I said, on the E S D, we all looked at and sent it by fire. And I talked to him about, he asked the question about motel tax. We don't like this all corners of time. We'll get a little bit more organized with it just before operations, before we start filing. Go ahead.
You may put me in copy. This is kind of, I don't have anything on our court, but I want some of this.
Yeah. Okay. So with the ordinances, with the hotel tax, a little bit that needs to change. But basically, what has evolved still just that same, it just needs to be found to, to be there. And at some point in time, we're gonna think of doing ordinance. Most cities have an ordinance that, that counts hotels, hotels, and that's those air B V's that, that they have to turn into your courts also. Not, not just money for them, but they have to pay. The person comes and says, I am wanting to rent this for thirty days. They actually, on that day, they have to sign something and say, I'm renting this for thirty days. Because if they don't rent it for thirty days, then all that hotel, hotel tax has to be paid. But for somebody who has rented for thirty days, they don't have to pay that one. But it's gotta be for the four thirty days. And then they can stay for a day or two, saying, hey, I decided I wanted to do thirty days. That couple days will still have to be paid. But there has to be records that's available for the city tax assessor, whatever, you know.
Business manager.
Whoever's in it, administrator. Yeah, has to be able to look at those folks to know whether or not they have to, have to, have to do that. So a lot of cities have those ordinances where that, if they fail to allow or give a court, it's a classic issue. Besides, ceiling or what taxes are not paid. But, excuse me, but this is new language that isn't allowed to kind of let these air B V's understand that they, they follow any bad outside. So.
Right up front, if they know that they collect four percent, then it's not their money because of the tax. Okay. And if we got a good record, which I'll keep in there, if we hand out a contract with someone, or grant something for a base, which is up something with forty percent, they need to understand. If they don't, if we were that after, they're liable for four percent.
Yeah. And actually, I think law, if, if they actually don't do late, they only have to get three percent because they can do four percent as an administrative tax, for what they collected. So the city would only get three percent. But the problem is that they don't file their report. The moment they're late, they fuck with that. So then they, the whole court of the city has to go.
So we'll get better on the billkeeping, and help them get better. They have some forms that they have to turn in. I don't know. Leave it up to you. And then what I, what I totally appreciate is that it's probably time for the city to have tourism department have this. So when we do this, I'll pull the old minutes, whenever we said where the money was going, and the money will come into the tourism department, big ministry by the city. And the reason for that is we get on the website, get the information. If someone has come to town and wants to know what's available, not just in Coles Spring, but all around the county, as far as housing, they can look on that website and see it. That's where the money's gonna go to support T tourism. Okay. And that's where we're headed. We've already done a world of that work on our website. We've got a lot more to do, and we can do that. But then we'll fine tune this, and then we'll get the word out. And what we're doing is advertising places that are online, for the B V's and that, and so. And we're asking the people that have come here and paid and advertised. So it just makes, it's common sense to me, it's a win for everybody. We just gotta get organized. That's why we're gonna go through that nineteen ninety. The only thing we gotta do at nineteen ninety is whenever they put in the motel, of course, and we decided to tap into that. It's worked well. We're in a lag right now, but we'll come out of it, especially with the growth of the trees. So I'll, I'll turn that, leave that to you to be on the next agenda to see where we are on that.
I think also, you're, you're about your extra territorial jurisdiction. If some places are there, I think you could have it too.
Well, I'm gonna let you do that. I'm not too happy back on the outside of the city. We've got all kinds of problems out there. And I'm not gonna beat with the county if they wanna do that out there. Joe, I said one's on the best line. I want, I want what you do. If they want counterfeit it, use it for themselves, they can.
They still want to say that they're a little bit bad.
All right. We're not annexing another square inch, okay? We've been, been down that road. Next thing after we do that one, then we're gonna get more involved with the municipal court, making sure we've got it set up. I had, I changed the design that we looked at last time, and I have changed the design that we looked at last time, and, uh, I made the, where the break room goes out that wall there, I've got a slide, solid core door, and then there's gonna be a coffee room there, refrigerator, where it'd be a jewelry room. And then you've got a door coming off the core room in there, and it'll be called a jewelry room. So it's a multi-deal plan. And they blow that door shut, they can lock it their side, they can lock it on the core room their side. And then, Wash is not here, thank goodness. I took some spread footage out of her judges' board back there, and made this happen. So we'll have that new, new design to look at in no time. And we'll start looking at what we've gotta do to get the personnel lined up to operate the municipal court. Any questions for council? Okay, moving on along. Amanda, you got two reports from the plate?
Actually, I had nine adjustments. One was a return online check. Three were a refund deposit after I applied to the account. And three, that was for removal of light fees because it was so smart before the victim. One, I had to forget, uh, correct an error of one of those light fees because I actually added two dollars, or two, I don't know what it is, but I missed it, I'd be sick. But, uh, anyway, and then one was a refund of the credit on the account. And I had three law costs, and all that since the date, since the date.
I'm gonna mention that, that I made the exact decision. Some, some of these areas were expanded, the civil lines were taken apart to get to places that's pretty expensive. And that becomes part of the homeowners' tax to pay. And some of the low water income people can't afford that, but I still want to get through them. So what we're doing is, we're gonna fund it, we're putting on a pipe of plant, uh, to, to run the line, and they're signing an agreement with us. Of course, the letter we have is we cut the sewer off, which automatically cuts the water off. So I think we've got, we have control of this. First one we're trying is over the ballpark, and it's pretty, it's line pump situations down low, below our line, and it comes a long way. But what it does, it opens up sewage in these other pipes that are down there. If they want to get on, then we can control it, and they're part of that line, and the lower, the conduit we have. So it can be a community effort for three or four households to share a pressure line to get it to where the end of our gravity line is. Now, I did meet with Randy Baker, and I had a pretty good, not a good idea, of the pause pause on the lines that we put in, there are no planes. And we're gonna, we're gonna put them on your map back there, and then when we do dig our stuff, we'll see if that holds. Because he was right on the spot, on the depth of the line at ballpark where we dug it, and where it was and where it came from. Some of the stuff comes from over there, the cherry circle, and we should have that way, but some of the stuff, believe it or not, comes up. We should have that. So I'll mark a lot of it, and when we start exploring that, get it going, and see if it's actionable. All right, uh, we've already beat, uh, old business aid death here at Forest Hotel Motel, so we'll just proceed on to the new business. We've already had a consolidated, uh, school bond election. We're beating the map. Discuss, next one's discussion, possible action, and here we'll have a brief, I say this in County Emergency Services District. Uh, we already, y'all have a copy of that? Uh, our fire chief and assistant fire chief will look at that, and see if I'm on the spot, and then I will hand deliver it. Like I said, I was doing October to the S D, and I'll take a little comment on it by the end of the year, but we'll have that agreed on, okay?
If, if I could say so. Uh, this was just kind of like a draft, because I wasn't for sure how y'all wanted to do any back and forth. So I just strictly did this, say that there was no money going back and forth, but where we talked about money, I could easily change that to say what it is that you wanted to. Because basically, what I said was, they need a place, y'all have a place, y'all can count, we'll take care of the maintenance, they put their money, it's good for them for, for the benefits of the city, and they're about happy. And then if they quit doing it, they leave, or anybody can leave after ninety days. But, but I wasn't sure that if you were to ask for reimbursement, I didn't know for sure how that's gonna go with, with lights or, you know, this. I, I, I just didn't know how to put that without doing some more.
I looked at the agreement with the association, uh, Firecar Association with, uh, the S D, and basically, utilities, get reimbursed with as much as possible. So I'm gonna work that into, when I go sit down with them, that's gonna stay the same. Now, I always, like I said earlier, I'll put electricity in the city's name, since we own the property, and the water and sewer in there. And I didn't snap that there's a pump, uh, system that I'll put in there. And whatever that is, the actual expense, the city will pay for, and we'll send them to the city, and they'll reimburse us.
EMS does not use the pump system.
Huh?
EMS does not use the pump system.
All right.
So it's paired up for it, said where I talked about.
What I might do is take the liberty to add in what we just talked about before I send it to them. I'm gonna give, uh, chief and assistant a chance to review it, to make, each of the council members here has the copy of it, and in a couple of days, call me and see something more, and jack it in, and real quick to, uh, everything. But if EMS is not using the pump system, and it's just the volunteers, and I pay for that, okay? There's no reimbursement of that, okay? But, if I'm wrong, electricity, water, sewer, they've always been a part of the association board. And I told them, it's gonna stay the same. There's not a grant charge, lease charge, uh, we'll go from there. But we'll be responsible for the maintenance, we'll be heavily responsible for the consumables, okay? And, uh, all fish and water, they take care of.
Well, I, I did, I, I did say, ask you that they were, that they were. I was just curious, how did, how did you know what they were used to pay?
Um, they were all in it. The E S D had the lights in their name, and what we did, we paid the sewer, water and the sewer, and we turned it into a turbine investment for two, and I sent a copy to them.
Now, that's basically all that we were. Sit down, Randy, you're gonna pay for it, and some of the coffee.
Reimbursement. Okay. I, I, yeah, that's what I, I was just wondering, I mean, if you use, if they use electricity, and they use electricity, I just didn't see, I just didn't see how, how you decided to pay for it.
Yeah, they understand, but I did make it clear to some of the members, I was not gonna change that, I'm not gonna charge them rent. It's the same system that's been used for several years, and sometimes I just slides right past them, and other things come out, or, or ruin their first bill. I had my shit.
And the other thing I, I wanted to say is, uh, apparently, I paid, it's just kind of, I, I make sure that it said that it'll be that old, over there in that car, that having, anyways, there are people there, the city is not liable for knee damages, or even recovery, or judgment, so you think, they're all, they're all.
Good morning.
Yes, yes. Okay.
All right. We'll try to get that delivered, and then, like I said, in October, change the market and practice and probably get your plan done. All right, next to discussion, possible action, improving a resolution to select grant administrator service, supervisor to complete an application, more applications, and with funding, project implementation, or the G L O, or the, uh, community development block rent for a L C P, uh, and your authorized city manager, which right now, that's another task I put on Jody, or myself to sign the contract. And what I'm gonna say here will apply to B also. Whenever, every time you get a grant, you have to do this. You go out for qualifications on grant administration, and you go out for qualifications for engineering. We did that for these, but when the bid came in with extra money on the label, and we gotta bid it again, we gotta go out again. Obviously, the people that's doing this are in the cap, or seeing as far as who's gonna have, be the most competitive. But this motion will go through, our grant administrator will understand that, and all the engineers understand that. This will turn into a process, we still look out, you never know. Whenever the engineer reviews, and they say, "We're out of business," and you've gotta look for another engineer, we already have that in one of us in the file, so. That applies to this C. B has the same coverage what it does with the engineer, and it's mainly targeted at three, five hundred thousand, two hundred thousand that we re, reoffer, okay? So I need a, uh, y'all's discussion, possible action, informal motion on C, and then hold on B, saying that we have the authority to sign and agree.
Your motion, so said. A second.
All right, the motion was asked, presented, uh, and it's on both C and D, is that correct?
Correct.
Got it. Most important thing of the meeting, the next meeting is on when, Joe?
November the third.
November the third. It will be, there will be a lot of stuff that we'll be catching up on, hopefully. This few projects out here, the war, and some of the other stuff. So bring your, bring your sandwich or whatever with you, and we'll cover all that.
No, no means this.
No, I, that's because. We have special. That's primarily, uh, part of the war contract, and we're, now we're having, we go out, you know, because something was missing on the horsepower, on the pumps down there. Called our attention. So rather than trying to get word out there, probably this week, bring, bring out this one. Washington, Georgia. Thank y'all for coming. Bye, bye.